You're watching Medfield TV.
Hi folks. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We were just in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. A F S C and the Local 3901 Council 93. AFL CIO regarding custodians, secretaries, and cafeteria staff. At this moment, I would like to take, I would like to have a motion to go into our 2020-2021 school budget hearing.
I have a motion that we open the hearing for fiscal year 2021.
Can I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'd like to welcome all leadership team here. Thanks for coming out tonight. I know you're all real busy, so I appreciate you supporting the budget. And to our resident setting here too, thank you. So we're going to go through FY21 budget as it is today. And just some important background that we typically go through on this. That superintendent is the budget officer. And the three general areas of responsibility for the superintendent as budget officer would be budget preparation, budget presentation, and the administration of that budget. We often call tonight's budget the superintendent's budget. And there's no official budget in FY21 until you folks vote one. By town charter, we need to have that budget into the town by January 31st. Changes can still be made, because I know that's one thing we've talked about in years past. That even though you vote the budget this evening, if you do, we still make changes plus or minus up until town meetings. So that's an important piece to remember. Important budget terms that we go through this evening. Chapter 70 and the funds at air mark for education, circuit breaker, the state reimbursements for special education costs. Once they go over a certain threshold, then we can apply for reimbursement of those costs. The state statute is 75%. We've seen as low as 42% where we budgeted in this budget, 70% reimbursement. CBA, your collective bargaining agreements. Steps lanes and increases the pay structure in the CBA. Step is yearly increase on the salary grid. Lanes are the increase based on degree attainment, which is the horizontal move on the salary grid. And the percent increase stat to the base, often called the cost of living increase. FTE is full-time equivalent. Per pupil expenditure is the total amount spent per student by a school district. It's calculated by DESI. So there's no real way to do it. You can't just take the budget and divide it by the number of kids and get a number like that. DESI has a formula they do. It's their apples-to-apples comparison of districts. So they put that out each year. Level service budget, the same program, same people. And essentially, aside from a couple of additional programs and folks in this budget, it's essentially a level service budget you'll see tonight. Capital budget is separated from the operating budget. And Michael does a lot of work with the town on that. And that's typically large items that are five, last five years or longer. And Student Opportunity Act is something we'll talk about. That's the landmark legislation that was part, was passed this past year, which totally revamped the way that chapter 70 is calculated. And we'll go through that a little bit and some of the regulations that go along with that. So our schedule for this evening, go through our mission statement, the budget process and assumptions. We'll talk about the Student Opportunity Act. Go over some things that are new in the past five years. And there's a couple of slides on that. I'm not sure we'll spend a lot of time on that based on the fact that we only have a few folks here. The budget drivers and priorities, the funding sources, benchmarking data with other communities, which we've done every year here. We've looked at what other communities spend and those communities that are always compared with or were compared with. Look at the summary and the breakdown, and then the increase, and then some thoughts about going forward. So I think it's always important to frame that budget conversation around your mission statement and why you exist as an organization. I think that we do a great job of this each year. That leadership team, we pull this apart and assess how we're doing each section of it, and then strategize how we can do better. But I think it's always important to remember why we're asking for the funds that we're asking for. So in terms of the process to date, leadership team established priorities for the schools in the district. And the principals, directors, department heads developed those budgets. They met with Michael and I and go over those requests. So those are typically the first personnel or any supplies that they need. We met again to review the budget request and input. Michael and I put together the FY21 initial budget. And then we presented it in December to the school committee. And then there was a couple of changes that you had wanted, especially the elementary guidance. We made sure that was in there. And then we had our initial meeting with the warrant committee this past, this week or last week? Last week? This week. So any assumptions that we made going into the FY21 that are federal entitlement grants will be level funded. And remember, we lost our Title I last year. So we don't feel longer qualified for that. And that was something that we, if you remember, we found out after, I think it was two years ago now, after the fiscal year had already started. And we don't want to qualify because of our poverty level is very low. Chapter 70 would be increased by $30 per student. So that is the minimum aid that we'll receive in SOA. Elementary enrollment will increase, and we have an additional feature there for that. Continuation of our tuition-based programs. And then circuit breaker be funded at 70%. So looking at the SOA of 2019, we're a minimum aid community, which comes out to be $30 per student. One important thing is that 35 school districts received 85% of the money. And you know, certainly that was something that for the greater good was needed in the state. It was definitely funding inequities going on since 1993, when it was originally released. So that was a good part, but we didn't benefit a lot from that in this community. The thing that we do benefit from is the phased-in approach to circuit breaker, transportation. We've never been able to get circuit breaker reimbursement for transportation, but that will be phased in. We haven't seen the mechanism yet, but we've been told it's been 25% this year. And it's going to keep going up to us 100%. But we haven't had guidance yet from the state. One thing that's important to remember, and I think it's, and Gus had mentioned it last week or this at the warrant committee meeting, is that it's really the state is the issue in terms of the funding. In FY09, the chapter 70 contributions to Medfield increased by almost $700,000. So think about an infusion of over 700, almost $700,000 into our budget. And now we're projected at $75,000. If you look at the last few years, we've been at about 65, 75, definitely under $100,000 with an increase in chapter 70. So they, chapter 70 works in terms of what they feel should work, but it doesn't really work for a community like us where we don't have a lot of commercial, commercial tax base. And we're really asking the taxpayers and homeowners to pay for most of our budget each year. So we're waiting for the additional requirements. There's, we met with, last week with the Commissioner of Education, all the superintendents in the state did. And what he is proposing is that communities that, like us, that have that $30 per student, that minimum aid, we need to submit a plan to him. And he was very clear that this was something that was developed by the legislature, not by DESI. And he wants to make it as painless as possible for districts like us. So he's saying a one or two-page report that he's going to give us a template for to fill out, essentially identifying what you're going to use that $76,000 for. And we're waiting for that, those guidance documents from DESI, which we should be getting this week or next week. But I think it's, it's important to understand that when you look at what DESI has given us for options in terms of how we spend the money, the commissioner said to us, if you're doing one of these seven things, which I'll share with you in February, March, if you're doing one of these things, then just add on to that and do a little more there. So it's not going to be like we have to reinvent the wheel and do a whole new curriculum. That's not what the intent of this money is. So we'll wait for that, and then we'll be discussing that in February. We have two meetings in February and certainly one in March. April 1st is a deadline that I'm required to submit that, and you're required to vote on that prior to my submission. So doing the past five years, and like I said before, we have two slides of that. I really try to do this for new parents that come in that may not have a recollection of what things were like, you know, prior to that, especially the things like the three-tier bus routes to two-tier bus routes that you had to put your children for Memorial on the bus and then come back 45 minutes later for your WeLok kids. Things like that, that have been really positive changes in the community. And so we can go through some of this if you want, or I can skip that, whatever you, whatever you. Okay, we'll skip over that. That's, that's fine. In terms of our Medfield 2021 direct budget implications, I think, you know, we're coming near the end of our strategic plan. And we've already started planning on when we're going to do this process again. But I think those are fairly similar to what we've looked at in the past in terms of what the implications are. You know, maintaining and enhancing our current staffing. You know, the commitment to professional development, those are all real important things for us. Committing to the whole child. And one of the things that Mary's been working hard on is looking at the specialization visioning, which is something that was, it's a little behind schedule because of the interim situations. But Mary's been doing a great job on that. The appropriate allocation that we have across all departments was something that was a major issue that we looked at before. I guess with goal number five, the big thing there is the schematics design and feasibility study that's going on with Dale Street. So all those have direct budget implications, and we tied them right back to our strategic plan. Our budget drivers are fairly typical of most school districts. Personnel costs is number one. Most school districts are 75, 85% personnel. My transportation, we've extended the contract for one year. Special education transportation with Except Collaborative. That was a problem for us last year. If you remember, we had a large increase of over $150,000 there last year. That is staying flat as we, right now is what we think. We're exploring other options. One of the things that we'd like to do, and I know Michael spoke about it with the warrant committee, is we'd like to be able to utilize some of the vehicles that are in town already with Park and Rec and try to do some of our in-district special education transportation with vehicles that are already there. That would save us, save us some money. So we're working with Park and Rec on that to see if that's an option for us. Special education, you'll hear a little bit later that we want to develop a new program for our transition kids. And that's an really important thing for us to do and a priority for us. As we talked about professional development, you know, you've all seen the presentation of R&amp;D. The teachers do a great job with that. So we have those three buckets of professional development. We have the R&amp;D, which allows our teachers to do projects during the summer. They fill out a request and we, as a leadership team, go through it. As long as it aligns with our strategic plan and something positive for what we're looking for, then we fund that. That's usually $50,000 or $60,000 a year. We also have the course reimbursement piece in the budget, which is 42.5. And that's a budgetary. That's a contractual obligation we have to school district. And then we have conference and travel. When teachers want to go to different events, then we support them through the conference and travel. With enrollment, we are just adding that one teacher right now at Memorial, and that's kindergarten teacher. So we are looking at enrollments that we, we have a projection of 223 students in kindergarten for next year. We have not made that number yet. We're about 40 or so short of that, so we're going to be watching that very closely. The good thing is this January, I want a really good sense as we get closer to the, to the beginning of the next school year or the end of this school year to decide what we need to do with that position. And then our health insurance costs, and we know that that is not a school expense because that, we're not a regional school district, it's on the town side. But we know that any increase in that, which I haven't heard what the increase is going to be this year, but any increase in that definitely impacts the amount of money the town can allocate to the schools. So looking at our current funding sources for FY20, and this is our school year that we're in right now, just to give you a sense of what it all looks like as far as the three components of the budget. So we have the chapter 78, which is a little over $6 million. Local contribution, which is $30 million plus. And then we have grants, tuitions, and fees, which we allocate over $3 million. So we'd like to talk about this slide because we're not just looking at local contribution in chapter 70. We generate our own money as well to actually run the district. So even though our budget is $36 million, it costs a little over 30, it costs almost $40 million to run it as you see it today. And then that important piece too about contributions to other districts. We have students that go to Tri County and also Norfolk Aggie. And that's the assessment for this school year FY21. That's an assessment that the town gets on the cherry sheet. But that's, again, that's money that the town can't allocate to us because it goes to those two schools. So our projected FY20 funding sources, state and federal grants, we're looking at over $600,000. Our tuition's at 575. Our school lunch program has really turned around the last five or six years, and we're looking at $700,000. And that funds the entire program. So that funds the staff, the food, everything. Athletics at 360, which is what we're looking at. Gate receipts and also fees that parents pay. Interestingly enough, with Triple E this year, we lost, was around about $14,000, I think, in gate receipts because of the Friday night games that we had canceled. Undistributed receipts is at 390, and that's things like parking fees and that kind of thing. Private grants and gifts, so that's what you, each time we have a school committee meeting and you accept donations, that's what the private grants and gifts are. And then our circuit breaker at 586. And that's, that's a pretty good estimate based on what we know of circuit break. Again, another thing that we feel is important to recognize is that we're funding over 40 staff members outside of the budget. So that's through grants, that's through tuitions. That's part of that 3.4 million is that we're funding outside. So it's not just that 36 million, it actually takes the 39 to run it as you see it. Just some benchmarking data, looking at per pupil expenditure. And I know that that, this is kind of something that we've, we've talked about each year. And this is off the clear.gov data, which they choose the comparable districts to us. We've done, we've done it a couple of ways. In years past, we've looked at the wealthiest districts in the state, and we've compared ourselves to those. We chose to do it this way this year. You see that the state average is at 17. We're at 1580. We've made some great strides, frankly. We've done pretty well. We're still not at state average, well below state average a few years ago. And you'll see communities that we often get compared to. Hopington's a little bit below us. Norwell, Lintfield, Sherrin, Gilhassett, Bedford. When we looked at the wealthiest communities, I think it was last year or the year before, you saw communities that were spending $21,000, $22,000 per student. So that gets you those extra positions that you may not have. You know, the extra positions that allow you to maybe be more efficient in central office or certainly more positions that work directly with kids. So this is the municipal contribution, so you can break this down by how much the town actually supports. And this, this really goes to the point that I spoke to before about how the state really isn't holding up there in the bargain for Medfield. If you look at, the state average is at 11.2. So that's the average that a municipality typically contributes to the per pupil expenditure. You look at Medfield, we're at 12.3. So certainly there are other communities that are higher than us and spend more on the municipal budget, but it speaks to the fact that the state really hasn't been keeping up with their support. And we have, actually have to get it directly from the community, which can make things difficult, as you know. So Westwood's here, where they had 15. Just some benchmark data to look at. So looking at our budget summary, we look at student services, district services, and policy administration. So our student services is going up 3.4%. District services at 3.5. Policy administration at 12.5. The bulk of that 191 is $115,000 increase in technology. So you might say, why is technology as part of the policy administration? We have to categorize this the way that DESI tells us to. So it seems weird for technology to be as part of that, but that's the bulk of the 191, which makes it look like such a large increase of 12.5%. Here's the breakdown. For student services. District services. And policy administration. What I would like to always point out is utilities are rented town hall for central office, 37.5. That's what we're paying these days. So one of the things that we've talked about, I know at the committee level and at the warrant committee level as well, is that lots of times, school districts will not pay number one rent and also not pay for water bills in their schools. So you take the 37 and the water bills away, you know, there's an extra almost $9,000. So looking at the elementary school budgets, Memorial School, you see that increase of 8.7. So we're looking at, most of our budget is salaries. Both that is steps and lanes, teachers, but that's also an additional kindergarten teacher. That's why you see a lot of improvement there. WeLok School, again, that's, that's all salaries increases, 8.1. And Dale Street, 2.2. So a lot of that's based on the length the staff have been teaching in terms of the salary schedule. So that's where you see some disparity. If you have younger teachers, it may not go up as much as teachers that have been in the middle of the pack. Veteran teachers will notice that they typically will just get the cost of living in longevity. They won't get the step, they won't get the lane. So there, if an average increase is, I know a couple of years ago, the average increase was about 6% for a teacher. The teachers in the top step may not get that because they only get cost of living and longevity. You see Blake, 2.6. And Medfield, 4.8. Of course, there's more teachers at Medfield High than there are at the elementary levels. And at Blake, you see that are the number, 4.8. Total at 4%. And we talked about with the warrant committee, this is the longest we've had in five or six years at this point. We had a couple of years at this point, we were at 6.75. We were in the fives before, we're in the mid-four, I think the mid-fours last year at this point. And now just at four at this point. And just looking at our distribution, pie graph. So here's the increase breakdown. So teachers, steps, lanes, increases, and longevity, 1.1 million. 1.5 new teaching positions, 119. Paraprofessional, you see a decrease of 125. So what we decided to do, and it makes more sense, is move more paraprofessionals into the federal grant. Because when you have teachers in the federal grant, you have to pay MTRS, the retirement board, out of that federal grant. So it's a better use of money to move the paraprofessionals in there. We may have county retirement, and you have to pay that out of the grant. So that, that worked out really well for us. And then all of this staff, steps, percent increase at 128. You see the reduction in tuitions at 108. And when we get into some of the programming, that, that reduction is because we want to start a transition program with which we now have a collaborative doing for us. We'll save $108,000 in the collaborative cost that we have at in-house. So that's where that decrease is there. The transition teacher for that program, and then the transition program startup, $70,000. Other district services, you see the increases, supplies and services, that's just, you know, things are going up, 22.8. Utilities at 28. There's an increase in technology. And other expense, our legal expenses, NEAS and leases, increases at $33,000. So this is a NEAS year for, next year for the high school. It's every 10 years. There'll be a visit in October, in October. So that when NEAS, when those folks come, we have to pay for the hotel, their dinners, et cetera. So that, that's a part of that house. So we did have some positions that were requested, two at Blake, two at Dale, that didn't make it into the final draft of this budget. 0.4 reading, learning specialist, 0.5 math, and in general, we need at Dale. So what does, what does the 4% increase get us? It maintains our current staff and programs. It includes all the steps and lanes, and a 2% increase for you today. Funds $100,000 to address teacher stipends. So one of the things that we thought was really important, the last negotiation, I think, as Bonnie will tell us, woefully underfunded for many, many years. We think it was around 20 years since someone had been adjusted. We made a commitment for multiple years of putting $100,000 into the budget to address those stipends. So the association and I have been working on that too the last couple of years to make the progress. But that, that is in there as well. Funds are other CBAs that we have. Increase at $70,000 for the transition. The decrease of district services, which we just talked about, adds a kindergarten teacher. Addresses our increase to legal expenses, which are double from last year or so. Adds 0.5 elementary guidance. The technology increase supports the second year of our policy revision. And essentially level funds most of our non-personnel items. So as we go forward, we have some key dates coming up with school committee meetings on the 13th, 27th. Well, the 27th, really, most of the agenda will be the Dale Street project and going over where we are at that point. And then we have the meeting in March, and then the meeting that used to be on the 2nd of April that was changed the last meeting. So it's now the 9th. I think it's also important to recognize that even though we have costs that sometimes we can't control, we also have costs that are mandated. So sometimes this budget process is very fluid from now until town meeting. So we have to keep that in mind. Also, that the numbers that we're using, the numbers that we're seeing for chapter 70 are really the governor's first, first budget. And we need to leave to see the House of Representatives budget and then the Senate budget. So there's a ways to go in that process. Typically, the Senate budget comes out after town meeting anyway. So with us getting minimal eight at $30, I don't think it's going to be a huge difference in what we see. We looked at other, just to put it in perspective, a community like Framingham, they look to be getting around $7.5 million additional. So it really is these 35 districts that are getting most of the money. Do you see any questions that you have?
Yeah, do you mind if we go into the weeds a bit with the technology?
Sure.
There's just, do I, should I? Yeah, sorry. Because I know you have the budget subcommittee, so I just want some clarity, please. It's the tech integration. It's underlying, Project 104. How else do I identify it? Department authority. Essentially, FY20 budget is 328 something thousand and...
Hey babe, you know what, what line you're on? There's 340 line items, so if you...
I know, I'm sorry. Let's see, line 1440? Is that? 513, 101? How do I best identify this, Michael? It's the first of the, I think it's the first page. Sorry.
Okay, you know, the thing is I have a different version than you have.
Yeah.
Actually, while they're figuring that out, can I ask you? I know that one of the things that we continue to be concerned about is being able to put people in front of kids and really being able to support them on a, on a level before things would be kind of crisis. Can you tell me approximately what the, the cost of 0.5 math specialist at Dale would have been that we weren't able to put in this, for an example? I mean, that's a 0.5 or a 0.4 reading.
So it'd be about 40, 40,000.
About 40,000?
Yeah, for 0.5.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Was that line 15?
It's a shame.
No, sorry. I think we're looking at two different sheets. Yeah, no, sorry about that.
Michael, did you see what?
Yeah, I know it.
What line was that, Kate?
Line 15.
5?
Line 15.
15.
15.
15.
Okay, I got it.
IT tech integration.
So we, if you remember, we had Julie Lowry. We took her out of the classroom last year.
Okay.
And she went into the Makerspace integration position at Dale Street.
Okay.
So we reclassified her out of teacher and put her in there. So that's why it goes up 108.
Okay, beautiful, thank you. And then, alright, it says contract services. And it's, it's a brand-new line item at 15 grand.
I don't mean to say that.
Yes, please.
So you have three brand-new line items, one's for $15,000, one's for $25,000. And I believe the other one is 15, 25, and I think 35. Those three new line items are your transition program for the special, that new special ed program.
Oh, wonderful.
So there's contracted services, this supplies account, and then this tuition account.
Okay, beautiful, thank you. Just wondering. And then the instructional hardware. Okay, beautiful. Thank you. Just wondering. And then the instructional hardware.
That's the 100,000?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the...
So that's, you know, that's replacement of what we have. We have a lot of machines that are aging out.
Okay.
And if you remember, one of the things that we've had in the last probably three or four years is an increase in the amount of parents that are not providing iPads for their children in the middle school. So we've gone from a very small percentage to, I think it's about 25, 30%. So that's been costing a lot because iPads cost a lot. What we're looking at doing for next year is for the same amount that we can spend for 30% of the iPads in the grade level, we can offset the whole grade level Chromebooks for the same cost. So that we're looking at doing that as part of that hardware. It's the machine that we're seeing throughout the district that they're using. It's much better than it was years ago when we were using iPad. We'll still have plenty of iPads in the middle school to do all the creative stuff that they do. But as you know, if you walk into any middle school, any classroom at Blake, every iPad has a keyboard attached to it, so.
All right. Great. Those were my major questions. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have, and I think I could probably answer this, but in the non-personnel expenditures, Memorial is the only school to have an increase to the curriculum materials expense, and I'm assuming that's tied to the increase in all of it?
Yes. And that's the other pieces that we had, and I failed to mention that in the presentation, is that we're also increasing the specialist time too at Memorial to make sure that if we have an additional kindergarten classroom, that they get all the specialists as well.
Okay. And then also, I'm assuming, and this is the right answer, but the health and wellness, especially in the high school, went up by a lot. And again, I'm assuming that's because of the new four-year requirement. Went up by like 8, 8,000.
That just increased for raises.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that'd just be steps, lanes.
That's...
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Megan, what was that regarding? What was that last one?
Your health and wellness at high school.
In the high school, okay.
Will there be another hire for the librarian?
Yeah, so that is, you know, that was John's position. So we did not fill that this year, and we're looking to post that later in the spring.
Typically, is that someone that I already know? That's the teacher and athletic director?
That's what we look for typically, yeah. Yeah, someone that's going to do a, I think it used to be a 0.4, we made it a 0.6. So that's because John was going to do some work with the middle school as well. So it's in there for a 0.6.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I have one question. Sorry. Oh, Leo, excuse me.
Any other questions on heat increases by building those changes of the bubbles that staff get moved around?
Correct. Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a new hire that, we locked librarian, is that part of that?
So that is in the budget. There'll be a new hire for that. That's Holly and I actually met about that today. So we'll be posting that position or doing a hire or transfer or something like that.
Okay, super.
Looking at, we're definitely filling that position.
Jeff, can you talk a little about space planning for preschool? Where we think...
Yeah, I think...
Best would, where would you best enter that?
Sure, yeah. I think one of the things that we're finding, slide there. One of the things that we're finding, and Missy can attest to as well, we have four teachers now sharing two rooms for preschool. And we have a large waiting list, and we have, you know, Medfield residents that can't get into our preschool.
And always a possibility that there will be children who come for district to need full-time services.
Sure.
And to be able to be in that classroom and actually have an actual integrated classroom as opposed to...
Right. I mean, I think, you know, our vision would be in the future is to expand preschool as much as we can and offer the programs that essentially preschool for all for our kids. It's important to have our young kids in there. It's important to make them a part of what we do in Medfield very early. And then they transition into full or half-day kindergarten, whatever they choose. Right now, we're fairly limited with that because we don't have the space. So one of the things that we're looking at is we met with a company for modulators outside of Memorial. So if we start to have the numbers that are projected, it's going to be really problematic to fit kids in Memorial without taking away specialist rooms, which we don't want to do. So we've met with them and looked at that, and that's something we may, you know, explore as we need it. Right now, with the numbers that are registered, we don't, there's only, we need one right now. But if we suddenly, in the next few months, you know, get an influx of kids, we'll be ready for it.
And where would you see that coming out of the budget that we have currently, or would we be coming back and saying that this is something we really need?
Yeah, our goal would be, I mean, I think originally our goal was to put it in capital. That was something that we're looking at. But I think we're going to try to look at a facilities revolver and see if we can fund it out of that. We have money earmarked from there to pay for the field as well. So we need to kind of project that out a little bit and see if we'll be able to afford it. But we're trying to do it with very little impact on the town's budget. That's our goal.
It's hard to pay for modulators when you know that their status is from the temporary.
Well, I think, you know...
But it's also important.
So we, we met with, we had a great meeting with MAP yesterday.
Yeah.
And, you know, we talked a little bit about what this would look like with them. And we felt like if we were to put this in place and we were to get modulators, that it'd be a nice transition for them to take them over once the new school is built. And then they could use them for their purposes, because certainly they're going to need that. If we have all these kids, they need more room as well, so.
They certainly do need more room.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. It's supposed to be sitting in the back of my bag.
Sure.
I just wanted more than, more than just to point out than actually a question. But the new program that Mary, the transition program, not only saves the tuition that we'd be paying out of the district and then puts it in the creation program, but I think that in our meetings, we had mentioned that there's an opportunity for revenue there by opening it up.
Correct. Thank you for saying that. So that was something that if we do, if and when we develop that program, that other districts would be in the same situation that we've been in over the years of not having a program. And then if we had space, we could tuition students in. So it would be revenue generation there as well. Right.
Any other questions? All right. So at this time, we'll open it up to questions from the public, please.
Too tall for this. Jerry Potts, Seven Curve Street. So I'll try to do this. I have the one, the budget from the site, so I'll try. But the good news is I'm starting with 515. So on the budget, and I guess it's an overall question on the budgeting, when we're talking about increases, is that against last year's budget or the actuals? So if we're saying something's increasing 115,000, is that versus last year's same line item?
Last year's budget.
Okay, but not the actuals. Okay. So in that...
Jerry, we can't do the actuals because we're not, we're still in FY '20.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering the role of some of, you know, these, even if you look at, for example, that same line item, 515, the actuals in the previous year were 286. Right now, they're at 250. And that increase to 437 would be a lot more than, actually more than, almost double the actuals versus the budgeted.
What was that, Jerry?
So this is that same one, that line 515?
I can answer that.
See, I don't have that.
Yeah, that's the same one you guys can talk about.
I can answer that. So Jerry, they, they reclassified some technology individuals. So we had to move people from one category to another. So you're going to see in the other IT, I think it's high school and middle school, that those individuals are now reclassified into that category because they streamlined the number of line items you can have for technology.
Okay.
So that's where you're going to see that fluctuation.
Cool. Thank you. This one isn't the same line item, so I apologize. We'll try to hunt and pack and find it. It's the, on the budget online, 210, 2110, 513, 10142. It's the S office salaries, which looks like those have been running around 200,000, and it goes to 343. So last year's budget was 319, it goes to 343. Actuals have been in the 216 to 275, so just seems like also...
So that's student services?
That's student services. So that's, this current year, our district placement person works September to June.
Oh, okay.
So next year will be a full year. So we had those couple of months that we weren't, we didn't have this current year, so.
Awesome. Thanks.
I've got a question.
Hey, Martha.
I came in a little late, so I'm sorry if you said...
Sure.
Just tell us who you are, Martha. Sorry. Martha Fest, 16th, well done. So two things I wanted to ask about, the technology thing, just trying to make sure I understand. So the middle schools, when you're bringing the Chromebook in, are you now buying for an entire class or just for the 30% that was getting?
For the entire grade. So it costs exactly, almost exactly the same to buy for the entire grade versus just buying that 30% of iPad.
Okay, that makes sense. And the other question, so back it up, so is that going to be the eighth grade?
No, just incoming sixth grade.
Income, the incoming class, gotcha. And then, gotcha. Okay, so every, so that's going to be an ongoing expense every year to get those kids? So for the next three years, so you'll build that, okay. And the athletic director additional 0.6, I think, is coming in that wasn't filled this year?
Right.
I'm just curious, because you said something about they're now doing work in the middle school. I'm just trying to figure out why the incremental resources needed, is a job bigger? Because we don't have more teams or more students in the athletic program at this point.
Well, I just, I mean, I think Eric can speak to that really well, that is, it's coverage of games at night. It's the amount of work that gets done with middle school sports now that, you know, maybe didn't do before. I mean, we're really good about having an A.D. or an administrator at all these major games, where we go to these games and Robert can tell you, there aren't administrators in other schools there. So if there's a Saturday night hockey game, people are there. Whether it's the A.D., assistant A.D., or Robert, or me, or Jeff Spurling, or Heather. So we're always covering that. So that additional time...
So that will kind of relieve, take the pressure off some of the other folks to have to be there.
Right, right.
All right, bye.
Sure.
Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. I'm fascinated by the mask policy services. I mean, mask is such a phenomenal resource for school committees. And I know that when I first started going to school committee meetings, that our school attorneys were used for doing a lot of the policy updates that needs to be done based on legal changes. And so with the new mask policy service, mask services that we are paying for, you would think that that portion of what we would need in legal fees would go down because mask may be providing us with sort of standard policy language. I'm just not, I continue to be unclear about what we're getting for the mask policy services when I don't see our policies on their website or...
Jess?
So this is a three-year process. It takes a great deal of time. I actually spoke to the mask, Catherine, yesterday, oh, and today. And we are at the process, we're at the process where there's just a huge amount of data comparison on their part to be able to kind of look at our policies and compare them to what we currently have. We are at the point where we will start going through, and they will give us essentially suggestions. And then we will need to start coding on this. There was kind of a lag because we did a lot of policy changes here in the fall. And so we can kind of process it from those. And that's kind of towards to go. I think we have a meeting slated where she's going to come out because now Megan and Tim are the policy subcommittee. And she's going to come out and talk to them about handing, how we hand off that process in next steps. So I would predict that we'll probably see kind of a churning, rotating policy. Essentially, kind of like just starting to really turn through the policy book about when there are policies that they should change in the next six months, you know, at the outside. I hate to give specific dates because I know that sometimes they get heavily confused and go up. But regardless, whether, whether it happens in six months, or in three months, or a year and a half, which is, and it's very, that contract with our costs, and this was simply over a period of time that they were generous to allow us to manage their costs instead of having to pull them out. So, and they will continue to support us over time. So essentially, they have to kind of construct a website. But right now, the policies that we have, that we have voted on, are on our school website.
Right, right.
And then we begin to add the process a couple of years, and there will always be a link through your school website and the NESC. It's really more of a posting arrangement as well as an evaluation. But that's not where any legal services in particular are happening. I think that the, whatever legal oversight we had to see around the policies that we were opening up earlier in the year were very specifically around school services, and some that comes out of a different line.
Okay, so there were, because there were, I think, a total of eight policy updates that involved a lot of intensive work with our school attorneys and our staff and...
And those were not ones that would have necessarily been...
I also know from seeing from either the mask alerts or from the Department of Education, they often offer model policies that you can just use and adopt. So I guess, again, it's a great savings on using school attorneys.
Or adopting those policies, and there's no, my understanding is you can just take them and adopt.
Yeah, I don't think that this is really a school attorney issue. It's many, and masks is really quite open about it. They have model policies, but every single policy has its... There are very few rubber stamp policies. There are some policies that are mandated by law. But there are very few policies that are simply rubber stamped, which is different. Every group of kids, every community, and every set of values sometimes is different. So they give you a, they kind of give you the rubric, the model policy. But then you come together and you talk about, is this the most appropriate policy? What ways do we need to tweak this for our district, for where we live, and how we would choose the...
But I mean, in terms of the ones that got updated this past year, those were pretty standard. Policies around discrimination, harassment, grievances, they were all pretty, they weren't really, they were templates basically from the U.S. Department of Civil Rights that had standard language that we were required to adopt. So I don't think those are really sort of flexible in terms of our ability to change the language in any of those, in any of those. So, and I think that those, there were some policies that, you know, two years prior, an alert had been made that we weren't, they were, after we had the rainbow incident, they were, you know, there was a note sent in saying, you know, it'd be great to look at these policies and update them because we were, looked like, seemed like we were out of compliance, and nothing was done. So then we ended up paying, you know, attorney fees to have to deal with those policy updates. So I think that's just those ways to save money on policy revisions.
But essentially, any policy that we do have, whether it is the NESC model policy or not, it would still have to pass by...
Always.
The school's attorneys.
Yeah.
So yes, they did, there was a great deal of draft that were in those policies that we were speaking of. And there's still, would have to, I mean, this is, you know, everything does need to be kind of passed by.
Those are typical expenses. When we're spending $14,000 a year, those are the kinds of things we're spending on. So there's no nexus between the increased costs and those policies being revised on what's...
But thank you. That was a very insightful question.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions?
So I believe at this point, this is when we vote in the superintendent's budget to now be the school committee's budget. Do we have a motion to approve budget as presented?
Motion to approve budget for the first year of fourteen thousand one.
Is that interesting? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, thank you. At this point, I motion to adjourn this fourteen million dollar hearing.
So moved?
Okay, second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So right now.
I'm sure I can go back up, we can do it if you want, whatever you'd like to do. As far as the feedback stuff, if you want to do that now?
Oh, yes.
Or we can, you can go on, doesn't matter.
No, please do the feedback.
Okay. So added to this report this evening was, just wanted to share some of the feedback with you that we got, number one, from the teachers and staff, and I want to, from the community and parents. So as you know, Thought Exchange is just a great piece of software that allows us to survey folks and then allow people to look at what other people in community or teachers and their, or staff have put in, and then they give it a ranking based on their importance and what they feel about it. So it takes away the issue around everyone having the same weight, no matter what the feedback is. So this allows people to crowdsource it and say, this is most important to us, so we're going to put five stars. Or this isn't very important to us, we're going to put one star. So what I decided, because we don't, you know, we don't have all night, I'm just going to share the top ten that came up or teachers and staff and the top ten that came up. It's the teachers, yeah, I've been trying to move this over. Anyway, the great thing is that you put together the top ten for us based on the rankings. You can share them so much better. Four hundred people participate in the parent community forum. And it ranked, it was three hundred and forty-seven thoughts in that.
It ranks them one from three to forty-seven. So once we get all that and we can generate a report, which we'll send out, we sent one out to the teachers last week. We'll send one out to the community and post it on our website so everyone gets to see, you know, what the most highly ranked thoughts were and all that good stuff.
Okay. Thank you. So you'll see that these are the top ten. Number one, for teachers and staff, how can we best serve students? The students should be our top priority. Number two, as we are anticipating from projection numbers, significant growth in population over the next few years. If grades are not reconfigured, classroom space will be an enormous issue. Class sizes will grow and specialists will potentially lose their rooms. The third most popular at four point one, how does a long-term enrollment look? We need to ensure that there are plenty of space for school enrollment to be housed under one roof. I think there's an opportunity to build a larger building with large classrooms, sufficient room for specialists. If we keep the same configuration that we have now, how will you address the space issue at the elementary schools? If we move to the new configuration, how will SAP be shared? In thinking about the grade configurations, I think you should consider state standards possible for programming and grade consistency. This isn't, it should be important because the standards are set three to five. Also, there are more programming possibilities with more grades and more consistency for three years. Is there going to be enough gymnasium space for an increase in enrollment into malls and after school used by outside organizations? It's important to tie in S E L with the new building. Student staff wellness should be at the forefront as we head into the future. We can maximize the amount of students under a new roof if the building can handle three grades as opposed to two. This could help students with better Wi-Fi, updated technology, and classroom space for learning. I'm looking forward to having a Dale Street school in close proximity to Wheelock School. This will give us additional opportunities to mix the grade levels and meaningful activities. And the number ten, if specialists keep the same grades as they have now, only one specialist per subject can be a memorial Wheelock at the same time, there will not be enough rooms or equipment. So, you know, real thoughtful feedback, and it was the same question for both parents and, and teachers. As we explore the possibility of changing the grade configurations, what are some opportunities and challenges for the district to consider? So very open-ended, we got a lot of great responses, but those were the top ten that we have for the teachers. And then community and parents, as I said, it was four hundred and one participants, three hundred and forty-nine thoughts, over ten thousand ratings in the community. So people really took it to heart in terms of looking at twenty to thirty of those and rating them. Here are the top ten for the community. Scalability, we should have a school that can grow with population growth. Let's make sure we are planning for the future numbers of students projected in each grade level. Grade level numbers will change, but class sizes are important to our children's learning. We need to be sure we have sufficient space to grow. Population growth, facilities should be configured and built with growth in mind. Class size, I think keeping the class sizes below a certain number is important to maximize learning potential. Opportunity to consolidate three grades at the same school for families with children two grades apart would enable both kids to be at the same school. Allow for play space. Planning for space based on the changing population, having flexibility is key. Demographics are major, are majorly changing, we need to be ready. We need to actively think about the future of our town's needs, even if they feel inconvenient now. The decision to pursue a smaller project, Memorial was renovated, has put us in a position of needing to build a much larger project now. Keeping MAP in the picture, MAP is an important part of our day and for many families, having the program onsite at the schools is so valuable. And the last one, number ten, the three to five configuration would give us, would give use this space to expand kindergarten and preschool programs. All students should have access to four-day kindergarten. I did, I did show that one to the MAP folks yesterday, they were very excited about that. Because what we, what we talked about with the design team is making sure that there is space in that new building so that MAP can be housed right in the new building. We talked a lot about that with them yesterday, what that would look like, what the size would be. So, you know, they were really excited about that. But again, real thoughtful, and once, probably next week, I'll just send the entire thing out to everyone so they can see all three hundred and forty-seven of them, and we'll do some graphs and all that kind of thing. One of the nice features they have here is that they have artificial intelligence go through and code some of the key themes that go through. And they can do heat maps and tiles and bar graphs and all that so that people can look at the data a different way. So we'll get that on a report to everyone. But we just want to make sure that, you know, you folks saw that, and if anyone had any feedback on three to five, I know you wanted to, you wanted to ask that anyway, so.
Yes. I think this is very helpful, and I think it, it allowed people to, to participate and have voice in and, and actually have the community tune into what other folks are saying as well. So I think it's a very positive exercise, so thank you.
The ten thousand ratings though was really something, and we didn't expect it would be that engaged, but it really was, so I'm happy about that.
From the fact that three hundred, well, it wouldn't necessarily be the three hundred and forty-nine people that participated in terms of giving thoughts.
That's right.
Done multiples. But the fact that, in general, that that's really a pretty amazing response rate for, for surveys in general for population.
Right.
I just have one question, because sometimes there were some thoughts there that were maybe not fact-based and in terms of what was, what was going to happen in the other areas, etc. So I don't know, is there going to be an opportunity to maybe capture those, keep these things and grab them somehow?
I think there were, oh, comments on there, someone's talking up here, which he did a great job, talked about it. So that was something that she was able to do. Because they give us, you know, that up, that asking to jump any.
That email, I mean, does that message, your correction, go to the person who, who made that comment? Or it's just, so the person who made the comment, though?
But everyone else can see it too.
Okay, but I'm, yes, no, you're right. No, I'm just wondering, the person who wrote it and then went through and then never saw it again unless they went in, you know what I mean? Yes, yeah, yeah, no.
I mean, I think I saw that some people were very concerned that, first of all, I would see that people would, because I, I did read all the comments because I'm a little geeky like that. And I just thought it was really valuable information, regardless of how it was rated. To be able to see that many people's kind of thoughts in, in a way in which they weren't concerned about who else or how that might be reflected on them.
Right.
And that they were able to give those in a way that was confidential, which I really appreciate. I think sometimes you can get some real honesty out of that. And people asking questions about, you know, like, so do we consolidate school buildings? And I, and I think we need to be really clear that, you know, we're preparing for more kids, you know, so that kind of, it's unlikely that, that all of a sudden we're going to decide that, you know, Wheelock should be shut down. Or, you know, there aren't, there isn't going to be just one grade hanging out at Wheelock and then everybody else goes off.
Right.
To, you know, and I think that there were some of those kind of easy kind of misunderstandings to, to correct.
Right. There was things like, can we do a new park and rec center in the school at the same time? Can we just do it together, one big project, which we know we can't, but I mean, it's certainly a good idea, we just, MSBA would never allow that.
Yeah.
Can we build one big school and close Wheelock? I think that was on there too. So things like that, that a lot of people give that opinion anyway, and then other people get to respond to it, so.
Yeah. And I think, you know, it's always good because it always, you know, you never know when you're going to see something that kind of expands your horizons a little bit in ways we haven't, you know. You guys have been thinking about this for so long, we've been thinking about it for so long. Sometimes there are just ways that, that we haven't thought about it yet. And so there's no piece of data or no comment that isn't valuable in that way, regardless of the start or not.
Highly rated, but with really good comments and, you know, thoughtful, maybe to think about, so.
And so Thought, Thought Exchange will then take a lot of these themes, right? So it isn't just on starring, but it's also a lot of the themes they can bring together.
Right.
And kind of put out, you know, there's so many people who have said in different ways, three to five, or no, I'd prefer to keep it two, two-two. And those will be able to kind of tease that out because it's, we'll be able to kind of crunch that.
Yes, everyone gets to see all that once we send it out.
Okay.
We're going to, we shared it with our design team and with the teacher one, because that report was done. With the design team and our O P M and also their consultants, they loved it. It'll be part of our education plan, it will submit to MSBA, it'll be an append, a dependency there, and then we'll, we'll incorporate some of that data in our plan too.
I also think it's focused enough that it doesn't take an enormous amount of time. It's usually things that you know are important to you, but to be able to just be able to give one thought at a time and not have to think, okay, I'm going to have to go through an entire survey or.
So Lily, because I didn't do it, but I want, I want to know, they told me this was what happened. If you went on and you saw thirty of them, whatever, right, and you started some of them, they said the next time you move on, you won't see those again. Is that true? That's what they told us.
I don't. I did it all one time.
You see all new ones, refresh it so that you don't see the same ones over again.
I have to say that it would almost be difficult to tell because so many of the ideas were very much the same.
Yeah.
Very much aligned, you know? So you, you, I could have had, you know, twenty totally different, I think we should do three to five, you know, let's put this all together or. And I, I wouldn't have known that they were completely different.
Right.
So just be perfectly honest, but I, there's no reason to say that they didn't.
Okay. We have, we have a phone call with them next week anyway, so we're going to talk a little about that. So that, we have that going on, we had our visioning session, we had a working group meeting on Monday, Dale Street had a visioning session, as you know, Tuesday night. We have, next Tuesday night, we have a visioning session with the education group and then a public forum from seven, seven to eight-thirty. We're going to send a flyer off for that, we just got it from our O P M this afternoon. And then the end of the month's another public community visioning session too, which will give an update. And we're still working on education plan and the neat thing about the education group next week is they're starting to really get a look at designs and get into sketching out some of the areas they'd like to see in schools. So it's, it's, the exciting part's coming with, turning to look at some of the graphs and do what we do with the space. I don't know if you guys were there, so everyone else.
I thought the feedback was very healthy from the staff and folks who were there. A lot of good questions from the community as well. So I think the, you know, solid understanding is, you know, what they want to see out of a building, what kind of culture that we built in this space. So I thought it was very good, I think the process has been very good.
And fantastic facilitator, he just, he really knows his stuff. And I suppose now it's getting more real, you know, we're going through the guiding principles, we're looking at other schools that, you know, and, and different, different layouts and what's a priority. So it, it's, it's interesting, I mean, we'll have to obviously prioritize, but it's a, it's a fascinating process.
So we'll, we'll have more conversation with the grade configurations as we move forward. But I know that we have a schedule that they set out with milestones, and at some point this spring, you guys will need to devote all the grade configurations.
Beautiful. Thank you.
All right, move it back.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So at this point, public input. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business, not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented. Anyone? All righty. At this point, we're going to go to the approval of minutes.
I'll, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, the executive session on January ninth and the school committee meeting on January ninth.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm standing because I was not there.
You were at the regular meeting.
That's right, but I was not.
But not the executive. Okay, yes, we have, yeah, all in favor. All right, okay, great. New business. Jean McCormick Scholarship? Joe Pacquiao.
Right, so we have the Jean McCormick Scholarship and also the Madeline, Madeline Grant Scholarship. So typically what we've done is, I've always given you the, the grades. But because now we post everything online.
Okay.
We didn't do that, so.
Fair.
So we, we reviewed everything and the students have met the criteria for the, for the scholarship. We just need a vote so that the town can release that to them.
All right.
Motion to approve releasing scholarship funds for the.
Jean McCormick.
Jean McCormick.
Scholarship to Joseph Pacquiao.
Right.
And congratulations, Joseph.
Second.
And Madeline, are we going to do them at the same time?
Are you going to do them both?
Yeah.
We did last year, yeah.
Okay. And to the Madeline L. Grant Scholarship for Caroline Shea and Claire McNulty.
Fantastic, and also Caroline Shea, yeah, and Claire, yeah, perfect. Do we have a second?
And both. Congratulations.
Yeah. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Leo, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Sorry, that was the messiest move I've ever put forward, I apologize.
Understood.
So the McCormick Scholarship is thirty-five hundred dollars, which is a great scholarship, and, and also the grant is three thousand, so congratulations to those students.
Great scholarships, great kids, so that, that's fantastic, all righty. Other items since posting, anything else?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, beautiful, old business, I could say we checked Dale Street, we covered that.
We did.
Okay, great. And, oh, so twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year calendar, I think we all have a copy.
Okay, so the new one.
Yes.
Good, thank you, all right, thanks. It's, it's amazing, we looked at this, we probably had four or five sets of eyes on it.
Yeah.
And Eagle Eye Riley picked it up. And, um, Eagle Eye Riley picked it up as soon as she.
How'd you know that's mine? That was actually my name.
So we appreciate you picking that up for us. Thank you.
Picking what up, sorry.
It was, it was, um, over here for the, the March days, which are, uh, parent conferences for elementary.
Yeah.
They were listed over here, not as conferences.
Um, I suppose, you know, I went back to that email we got from a parent that I thought was a very thoughtful email. Um, and I thought she brought up a very valid point in terms of all these early relate, release days within a certain set of time and the hardship it caused with working families. And so I'm glad, I, the way I see it, it's been thoughtfully considered.
We did.
Okay.
Is there a, like a contractual number of teacher professional days for, I would assume?
No. No, so we have, the one eighty-three is their contractual year.
Right.
And then we give, you know.
Wiggle and whatever. Okay, so I counted nine half days, right?
Is we, yes, we have two of those half days are teacher choice. That's contractual.
Yes.
Okay.
One of the, just to kind of talk around the background of this too, is that we tried to put in more professional half days so that the amount of professional time that had to be taken and taking teachers out of the classroom, um, which was, it, we just wanted to make sure that we were kind of making that happen as quickly as possible. So being able to put these half days in once a month is kind of.
Right. No, I get, instead of, yeah, pulling them out and getting a sub.
The job of that a day that we're taking teachers out for days.
But instead of it being a whole professional day, instead of two half days is my point.
Right.
Yeah. That's, is that just fifty?
So we have the two days prior to the start of school.
And I see there's another.
And then there's one usually in March or April, which is, uh, DLB.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we keep that in.
The other famous DLB.
Is the, uh, half day on December twenty-third, is that just because?
That's contractual.
It is, okay.
That was part of the agreement with the extension of the elementary school day, that the day before we start winter break will be a half day.
Same thing with the baby day, right?
Correct.
Okay. As long as the working parents know that.
Yes. Any other questions regarding the calendar? Does it, do we have a motion to approve this calendar?
I can make a motion to approve this calendar.
I'm sorry, I have one more question before you make that motion. Um, and this may be, aside from this calendar. Um, but I know that a lot of working parents also have problems with the conferences being held during the school day. And I'm wondering if that's like a negotiation that has to take place when the teachers' contracts are up again about moving to, you know, some afternoon, but some at, at night.
Yeah, I think that's a conversation we have to have with them.
Okay.
But I agree. I mean, I think it's something that, um, I've heard feedback on that since I've been here, so.
I also have to say that our teachers have been very flexible and, you know, they will get any parent.
They'll come before school or after school.
But in a more formalized, yeah.
I think that, I think that's, that's true. What I did hear a lot this year though, there was a lot of, um, because of the half days and even still finding coverage to go with or without the child, uh, was difficult. So I heard there was a lot of cancellation, like there was not, I would be curious to see out of how many students in the classroom, how many of the conferences were attended. Just out of curiosity.
I mean, I think that, um, my former district, we did that, it was only during the day and once at nights and, you know, we definitely had much better attendance at the night. There was no question about that. That was something that we worked with the association with.
So just to get that out there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great comment. I think we need to look at, um, middle school conferences as well, so.
I, I think that there are, I have heard so much positive feedback.
Yeah.
About middle school conferences and the kind of experiments that we found with this year.
Yeah.
Nice work.
Alright, now you can go for it.
Uh, make a motion to approve the calendar.
Second.
Alright, February twenty-second, we're changing locales.
Right, so we typically have our meetings, as you know, in the library at, uh, high school and there's a lot going on that night here. And they're using the library during that time. So we thought, you know, and we thought it'd be a good idea to have it at Dale Street in the cafeteria. That's, we're going to have the design team, OPM, doing some presentations to us. So it's kind of nice to be symbolic right in there. So that's, it'll work out great. So we posted for the Dale Street cafeteria.
We request a reminder on the twenty-sixth.
Absolutely.
And I will quite literally be sweating myself in the free given. Well, because the reason that I can't be having here is the entering high school night.
Right.
So I'm, I'm sending David.
Yeah. Perfect. Um, superintendents report to the committee?
I have no information.
Okay. Uh, future agenda items, um, National Honor Society criteria and social studies frameworks discussion. Our next meeting is on February thirteenth, but at this time, we'll move to final comments. Monsieur.
Um, so the big one for me is we have, we have a big fundraiser happening at student council. It's, um, pudding for patients. It is in March.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Putting.
Putting for patients.
Oh, putting.
It's our year, our annual fundraiser for the Jimmy Fund, which raises money for, um, Dana Barber Institute. And it's a kind of a great event. It's one of our biggest ones of the year and it's great for families with younger kids of, and really anyone. It's fun every year. I like it and it's a lot of fun. Uh, but it's, for you, you don't know, it's eighteen holes of putt putt in the gym and then we have a bunch of fun activities in the cafeteria. Food, but it's also for a great cause and kind of a great community event. And that's March twenty-second from twelve to three.
Nice guys.
All is well at the high school?
It is. It's going good. Second semester.
Not that you're counting.
Not yet.
No, it's coming too fast.
My elementary kids know what, what day it is.
Because they have calendar.
Yeah, well, yeah, but it's, there's only thirty days left. It's like, what, you a senior?
Hundred days coming up.
That's right. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I mean, standing room only, this is all time low. I'm, I'm blown away. That is like, uh, like low, like attendance from my. I thought about that, actually.
Well, actually, if everybody here isn't at Kurt Jackson doing his Charlie Chaplin totally silent, uh, performance tonight at the library, I have to say that's. If, if there were, again.
We picked a rough night. It was a rough, a lot of draws here and then field tonight.
Yeah, no, it is.
So, um, though nothing major to report, uh, from here, um, the badge of season is, this is the toughest thing to do. So, uh, hopefully it goes smoothly. Um, but there's always sometimes tough decisions to be made. So I'm happy to hear about the devices at the middle schools, uh, kind of being uniform, uh, for management purposes. Um, across the country, I'm hearing. For management, uh, filtering management and some of the devices are at home. Um, there can be certain safeguards put in place. Uh, from an enterprise level that the school district can, uh, push out.
No viruses coming in.
That's right. Well, viruses are any, uh, uh, all kinds of things.
Yeah.
It's a scary space.
You probably have more granular kind of vocabulary.
There is a lot of vocab.
Virus.
It's a lot of jargon. So that's about it.
Um, yeah, ditto on that. Um, I just wanted to also bring back to you a little of what, um, we had our second meeting, uh, of the task force on adolescents substance abuse and mental health at, uh, the Norfolk County Correctional Facility. And I did get to take a tour and it was impactful, to say the least. But, um, a lot of what came out of our last meeting was, um, solely concentrating on the problem of vaping. Um, and they had a nurse, or actually I think she was a, a doctor, an ER doctor, kind of doing an overview of, you know, the dangers of vaping there. And then, uh, we went around school by school and it was really enlightening to see some of the really deep work that some of our neighboring schools have done. And, um, part of what I'm going to do next is kind of contact them individually to get a better sense, um, of the programs they've used specifically in their high schools in order to bring awareness or to combat vaping, um, and kind of come back, maybe get some of them to come talk to us and, um, I mean, not recreating the wheel, but definitely getting a little bit more active, at least at our high school level, in putting some of that together. So it's been really a positive task force to be part of, so.
Are there students on that as well?
In fact, in Needham High School, there's a very active, um, have you?
But not on your task force. This is.
They are bringing the kids that, um, oh, I can't remember what school it's from, but they were going to be on the Chronicle and it was because of the work that they did. And I, I have to go back to my notes and see what, but at our next meeting, they're bringing some of those kids that were able to, um, bring it to the Chronicle to, um, come speak to us. So, but I, in Needham High School, I know that there's an active group that, like, that's their focus. Um, and so I was going to talk to them. And then at Franklin, they, they also are very active, so.
Fantastic. And we've got some kids, some students that sit on the Medfield cares about prevention.
Right.
Which they're awesome kids too.
Guess my time's up.
You're getting the hook, Megan.
Now that might be convenient. I don't really have a lot to share. I think it was a good meeting and I was.
Quick, it's almost up.
Jedi.
For the townwide master plan, uh, I just want to mention that there's a visioning meeting to kind of bring back to the community what we've heard. And that will be, uh, March twenty-sixth. So at some point soon, our community will feel very visioned with all the number of things that we are doing. But I think, you know, it was a really, um, it's a dynamic group and it's really interesting. A lot of people who are so really embracing the idea of how do we kind of bring that field along and expand our possibilities. Um, and, uh, I will be in Dale Street on, uh, I'm very excited, on, um, Monday and Wednesday this week. So then a fourth, I'll be in the co top fourth grade and then a fifth grade class on Wednesday. Um, and actually I just want, one other thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, because I found it really interesting. Richard DeSorger is going to be presenting at the universe, uh, the Unitarian Universalist Church, um, on, uh, this kind of, on the attack on Medfield.
King Phillips?
King Phillips. The Native American being correctly known as King Phillips.
Metacommence war?
So anyway, in the presentation, but what I really thought was interesting was that in his, uh, kind of write-up for it, it was really about talking about different perspectives and kind of more nuanced perspectives, perspectives around, uh, the colonial and Native American experience here and how those might be very different now. And so I'm actually really looking forward, I'm going to make some time, uh, to go there on Monday because I want to know.
Is this Monday night?
It is, yeah. I want to know kind of where he's going with that because I do think that I admire the idea that you can look at something and then as a historian, shift your perspective around where that, where that story comes from. Because the people who tell the story are the ones who says that they won, right? But there are many different perspectives about, so I am actually very excited and I am getting people who I know who are interested in these kind of perspectives to, uh, to come out. I think we'll have a nice turnout. So that's, that's it for me.
Okey dokeys. Um, well, Susan Cowell is going to, um, present the Metro West Health Survey results to the high school community next Wednesday night. So I really hope people from our community really come out to, to hear. Um, and also I just want to add that, um, the creativity in using in district cars that you guys are talking about. I'm actually, I love those ideas. So I think that's, that's great to use what resources we have. So I think that's really, um, that's a very positive step forward. So I appreciate it.
Hopefully it will be possible too, hopefully.
Please.
With, with those same.
Shuttle pass.
Please. I think.
Revenue building.
Self-driving revenues. One thing I'm starting to use a lot, I, I really like is the, the website and the events tag. I actually love little things like add to your calendar. But like when you mentioned Susan Cowell, like I, I just, I look there and I don't see it.
Wasn't on there yet?
No, so, and you see that sometimes. So I think that's always, we're always trying to say, make sure, um, we want to get the community more involved in so many of these things. Um, but that, that to me is, it's starting to become a great resource. It's just so easy. So I'm not sure operationally, Jeff, who manages it, but sometimes it could be a nice way.
Yes, that should definitely be on there. You're right.
You just pop in events, you see. That's my comment for coming late.
But that's a good comment because we want people to come. And, um, so yeah, thank you.
So my, my only thing is I want to remind everyone that Medfield Talks is hosting, uh, Dr. Judith Owens on February eleventh. And she's from Children's Hospital and does a lot of work around pediatric sleep and the importance of sleep. So she'll be here. She's done some great presentations. I know she was in Holliston, she was in, uh, Dover Sherbrooke, she has been in Needham. So we're really happy to have her here and have that conversation.
Sugar. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.